Come to order. Uh, Mr. Wazworth, do you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Thirdly, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Burcroft, our city treasurer, administrative staff and listening audience. Today is Monday, March the first, twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is the City of Romulus City Council regular meeting. And this meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight, three, two, two, six, eight, three, six, six, nine, eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act two fifty-four of twenty twenty and the remote participation in public meetings policy adopted by City Council on December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty by Resolution number twenty dash three fifty-five. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting by phone, call one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID number followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And at this time, I think we're gonna go ahead and have roll call, even though we did have a special meeting. But we know some were kinda in and out there, so uh, let's go ahead and have roll call for this regular meeting. Uh, Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Abdo.
Yeah.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wazworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams. All right, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum for this regular meeting.
Okay.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four chairperson's report, five mayor's report, six clerks report, seven treasurers report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven communication, and number twelve adjournment. And a motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two are the minutes for approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M.
So move for approval of the minutes held on uh, from the meeting held on Monday, February twenty-second.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Abstained.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B. Approval of the minutes from the special meetings held on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to discuss charter amendments. Motion would be in order to approve those minutes.
So moved. Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, who supported that?
Abdo.
Abdo.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the minutes from a special meeting that was held Monday, February twenty-second at six thirty P M to discuss the charter amendments. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Stayed.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. Takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, at six o'clock, we had a study session discussing uh, the honorary honorary street dedication policies. At six thirty, we had a study session discussing our quarterly investment report uh, from my uh, Treasurer Stacy Page. And uh, at this time, the Chair is gonna recognize uh, Councilwoman T- uh, Tally.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to at this time, just do a um, hope I can get a second on the resolution for a milestone birthday for our own Mrs. Jan Lemon, who celebrates her birthday this week. Um, I think she told me March fourth, but I could be wrong, but and I'm not gonna tell you what the milestone is. You call her and wish her happy birthday, and she'll tell you. But if I can get that, thank you, Ms. Webb, that's um, just saying happy birthday to Ms. Jan Lemon this week.
Exactly. Uh, it's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for resolution birthday for Ms. Jan Lemon. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the chairperson.
John, can I? John?
You had some? Okay, go ahead.
Um.
Wazworth?
I'm fine, uh, thank you. Um, last meeting, I wasn't here, but you folks uh, approve the library lease. And I just wanna compliment uh, Mayor Burcroft, the Council, uh, Ms. Abdo, who was part of the negotiating team and the library board itself. You know, we were far, far apart, and we uh, came together as one. And now the uh, and and now the library has a five-year lease. And as a member of that board, I'm very proud of that library, because it does many, many things other than just rent books there for for our, for our people, uh, along with the residents of uh, Huron Township. Um, and uh, good, good job and well done. Uh, number two, I wanna talk about shots. First of all, the dog shots this weekend, I at the um, DPW, I I guess there was well over a hundred people there that got their shots for their cats and dogs, and they bought their dog licenses. And and of course, um, um, Dr. John will donate a uh, a check to us. And um, and the people that were there are really impressed about the services that this town provides. There was um, one woman from a different town, and I won't mention that town. She says, I don't know why my town doesn't offer services like this. And finally, um, the um, other set of shots are the ones for the human beings that we um, gave this uh, past Saturday. You know, it's it's um, so important to get vaccinated, you know. My wife and I got back in November, we got hit by this thing. And it looks like we're finally coming out of this, and life should get back to normal in the um, in the near future. And I appreciate what Rose and the um, and the seniors and the senior citizens did last weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wazworth. That could close the chairperson's report.
Mr. Chair, before you close out your report, um, if I may, I'd like to kinda piggyback um, on what Councilman Wazworth on the uh, dog and cat inoculation event. Um, it's really my first time actually participating in that. I usually take my pet to to the veterinarian, but um, it was very well organized. I mean, with um, uh, you know, having to social distance. Um, and it, I I was very, very impressed. And again, you know, thank you to Dr. Herman, his team, uh, to the ordinance department, they were there, to our animal shelter, their department, DPW Jerry Fr- Frayer. Um, it definitely was a team effort, and uh, it was just, it was just well done. It was just well done, and so um, this, it's great service that our, that our city offers. I I know, uh, Mr. Wazworth, you you always compliment and support that. So this year, I decided to, I remembered and to participate. Um, and can't forget the City Treasurer's office, because they were there collecting money. So again, it was a great service, and again, kudos to everyone. It was a great team effort.
And I, if I can also expand, I believe this was the tenth, I believe this was the tenth year in a row, and they'll be back next February. Thank you.
They're gonna show you that uh, team works, makes the dream work, right, Ms. Tally?
Here, amen.
Okay, uh, that concludes the chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
She's muted.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to number five, the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, our clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, uh, viewing audience. Um, the um, kinda message I had, Mr. Chairman, is kinda what you just talked about, which is teamwork. Uh, and it's Proverbs twenty-seven seventeen, you've heard this one, as iron sharpens iron, so does one person sharpen another. And I thought that was a great teamwork quote. Uh, I also wanted to chime in and and echo what uh, Councilman Wazworth said about the vaccinations. We had a great team effort. Uh, I mean, I know I'll miss people, but Rose and Maria, Kevin Kraus, the firefighters, um, um, Leondo over at the Senior Center, Steve Dudek here at City Hall, we were bombarded with calls when there was misinformation went out to the media. And Michael Skaska got on it with the PR firm, and and I tell you, uh, Jill and and Jess were here just answering calls, trying to respond to people. The the Senior Center phone was very active, but all in all, uh, it was a good effort, as Mr. Wazworth said. And I just wanted to thank our team, but also I wanted to thank Wayne County uh, for allowing us to have it here. And as we continue uh, to uh, put out information on vaccinations, stay tuned. Um, but I thought our team really stepped up and did a a nice job, and we were recognized from Warren Evans' office for the teamwork. So thanks, everybody. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of action items uh, tonight I'd like to go through.
Okay.
The first one is a recommendation from Gary Harris, our purchasing director. Uh, this is to concur with the administration uh, and to consent to a piggyback agreement on the state of Michigan's extendable purchase program for M- my deal contract zero seven one, B seven seven, zero, zero, one, seven, one. And that's with Wix and Speedway for the fleet gas cards. And uh, special thanks to Gary Harris for doing all the research on it.
Chair, the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and consent to piggyback on the state of Michigan's extendable purchasing program.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for piggyback on my deal contract, W X and Speedway Fleet Gas Card Program. Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Chair, um, just real quick, I just wanna just again, Gary Harris, the job he does, every time I see piggyback I uh, back, I think of saving, so thank him for his efforts, his diligence and bringing these deals to us. Thank you, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
And through the Chair, I must say, thank you, thank you, Gary, because Gary has, he's came up through the ranks. And I've spoken about this before. He was trained by some of the best finance um, employees that we've had. Debbie Hoffman, Abby, and then purchasing from Lynn Conway. So I am really grateful to Gary for bringing this forth, because he has really excelled all expectations from me. Thank you, Gary.
John?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wazworth?
If I could, uh, Mayor, could I, I see, I I think Gary's online. What does the term piggyback mean in this bid process?
Gary, can you give them a layman's term of the piggyback and how that saves us, please?
Yeah, uh, it's just a purchasing term. Basically, it's um, when another organization goes to bid, they ask the um. Hey, y'all. I'm sorry, they ask whoever is awarded the bid if they will allow the uh, award to be extended to other communities or to other businesses to um, participate as well. And what that basically does is by spreading it and giving more people the um, the deal, um, and more people are gonna jump on it. They're gonna give us a better price in most cases.
And we piggyback on each other, okay?
We piggyback on it, yep, um.
Thank you.
I'll piggyback on state deals, other cities, whatever is available, that gives us a great price.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary, keep up the good work.
Okay, Gary, thank you. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, also Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, this is uh, to concur with the administration and consent to a piggyback on uh, my deal contract zero seven one, B seven seven, zero, zero, eight, one. This is to purchase uh, one twenty twenty-one GMC one-ton dump truck. Uh, the amount is fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight and zero cents from Todd Wetzel GMC. Uh, the funds have been verified and available out of the motor vehicle fund.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Wazworth.
Now that I know what piggyback means on the, on the contract to purchase a two thousand and twenty-one GMC one-ton pickup truck from uh, Wetzel GMC.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Tally, to piggyback on my deal contract, twenty twenty-one GMC one-ton dump truck, any discussion? Here is no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation of Kathy Hood, Assistant DPW Director, also Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, this one on a vehicle also is to concur with the administration, consent to piggyback my deal contract zero seven one, B seven seven, zero, zero, eight, one. This is for one uh, twenty twenty Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck, uh, the amount thirty-three thousand, five, twenty-three, zero cents to Gorno Ford. Uh, funds have been verified and available also out of the motor vehicle fund.
Through the Chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I would like to make that motion and then have a discussion of to concur with administration and consent to piggyback on the M- my deal contract number zero seven one, B seven seven, zero, zero, eight, one to purchase one twenty twenty Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck in the amount of three thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars with Gorno Ford.
Support, discussion.
Okay.
As well.
Motion by uh, Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for piggyback on my deal contract, twenty twenty Ford tw- F-two-fifty pickup truck. Uh, discussion, Ms. Tally, and then Ms. Webb.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, I just, again, we've been talking about teamwork, teamwork uh, today, the last couple of weeks, actually. And um, I was uh, talking with Bob McCray, and just what they done to make things work. They're due for these trucks, they are due for these vehicles. Um, I saw some pictures of some of the things they've been dealing with, working with, and still do great job in our city. So great job to Bob and his team and everybody involved, but they are deserving for these vehicles, thank you.
Uh, through the Chair, if I may?
Ms. Webb?
The only thing that I have to say is, for the listening audience, I know sometimes it's like the pricing may be steep, but the Ford F-one, uh, the Ford F-two-fifty pickup truck will be used by not only the DPW mechanics, but also the road crews. And and then the other one dump, one-ton dump truck is gonna serve two purposes as well. It will serve as a plow truck for the winter uh, months, but it's primarily used by our water and our sewer crew of the DPW. And I just want the people to know, um, we're actually getting four trucks into.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
You're quite welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to add on that, I know that uh, these are frontline vehicles, and I thank you, uh, Councilwoman Webb, for bringing that up and for the 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 comments from uh, Tina Tally also. We often get praise and accolades for the hard work the DPW does, and they do a great job. They can't do it without equipment, so.
Right.
These are going to the frontline and will be well appreciated and used, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other comments, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, last action item tonight is a recommendation from Virgil Scappatici, DPW Director, and Stephen Hitchcock, Legal Counsel. Uh, this one is to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract with the state of Michigan for a pathway construction on Huron River Drive from North Line Road to Five Points intersection. Uh, the cost share is ninety-three thousand, one fifty-three. Uh, it's split amongst DPW and DDA. Uh, the state of Michigan has awarded the city of Romulus three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven forty-seven and zero cents for that project. Uh, the uh, funding has been confirmed and available on the major road, non-motorized account.
Through the Chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract with the state of Michigan for the pathway construction on Hur- Huron River Drive north from North Line to Five Points intersection with a cost share of ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three, which will be split amongst DP- P- DWP and and DDA. The state of Michigan has awarded the city of Romulus three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Word.
Word. Discussion?
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, I think that was reported by Mr. Wazworth uh, for Huron River Drive sidewalk project, state of Michigan contract approval. Uh, discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
I just wanted to know how soon the construction or the timeline for the construction, because effectively, this is going to help connect Romulus with our bike path. And I think people would be interested.
Uh, I, the timing is the spring. I know Jessica Keters, you're on, do you know, is there any change since our last uh, DDA meeting? Or or Mary, either one?
Um, I can speak to that real quick. There is no change. We will start construction in the spring as soon as contractors are able to mobilize or the contractor that um, will be awarded this contract is able to mobilize. So we're expecting a early um, April, early to mid-April start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other uh, discussion, roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Number six is the clerk's report. Again, good evening, City Council. Mayor, Treasurer, and listening audience. Um, I have two action items under my report this evening. Uh, six A for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen. Um, this is for the May fourth, twenty twenty-one special school election. Um, Budget Amendment in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. All expenditures for this special election um, are reimbursable under M C L one-six-eight point three-one-five. Um, and this budget amendment was introduced at the regular council meeting on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Abdo?
I'll make that motion for the second reading and final adoption of Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen for the funding for the special school election on May fourth.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen. Any discussion? Here is no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Last action item under the clerk's report, six B, and this is a study session request. Um, at the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one special meeting, council requested another uh, study session to further discuss the proposed uh, charter amendment. Um, therefore, this study session is being requested for March eighth, twenty twenty-one at six forty-five P M, again, to discuss proposed charter amendment. Um, in addition, at the same meeting, um, our city attorney, Steve Hitchcock, is requesting that there be um, discussion regarding future electronic council meetings after March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And again, the date and time, they are available. Um, we're uh, estimating about a forty-five minute meeting, and there is enough time um, for discussion.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I will, I will move if we um, that that we approve a study session for Monday night, uh, March the eighth at six forty-five to discuss the proposed charter amendment.
Support.
I heard two voices.
Ms. Abdo, support.
All right. It's been, been uh, motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for study sessions to discuss the proposed charter amendment and electronics council meetings. Any discussion? Here is no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. Um, tonight, we did our quarterly presentation. Um, we are on track. Um, the report looks really good. We're all within um, Public Act twenty in our investment policy. Again, I wanna thank Brian Quinn for his report and Council for all their questions. Um, Ms. Tally, I hope you enjoyed the economic update. I know you look forward to that. Um, next on my report, today was the last day to pay property taxes here at um, city offices. And um, if you still have property taxes that are due, those need to be sent to the county. If you have any questions, or if you would like to use a kiosk, or have questions about paying online, you can definitely call the Treasurer's Office, and we will help you through that process. Of course, if you have any questions, you can always call us at seven, three, four, nine, four, two, seven, five, eight, zero. And finally, I'd like to compliment um, the dog um, inoculation that took place this weekend. I've heard nothing but positive things, and I appreciate my staff, Amanda and Ron, taking payments. And um, it was a smooth process, and they did a great job. And to the, all those that were involved with organizing, setting it up, um, I really do appreciate the hard work and the effort. I know that our residents are very pleased with that service, so thank you to all those that did participate. And that would, will be it for my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Next on the agenda is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined this meeting, um, by by touched on phone, press the star nine to uh, raise your hand and uh, the star six to unmute yourself after you've been acknowledged. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. We ask just for the record that you would state your name. And as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And I do not see any raised hands. I, Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone. Well, wait a minute. Here's one, okay. We do have one raised hand. Looks like uh, Gina Wilson Stewart. All right, Ms. Stewart, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you very much. Gina Wilson Stewart, and I wanna start off by saying happy uh, Women's History Month, because it is March, and we just finished Black History Month. And I want to start off by saying happy, uh, Women's History Month, because it is March and we just finished Black History Month. So, uh, shout out to all the women in Romulus City Government and the city of Romulus. So enjoy your month. Okay, so thank you, Councilman Watson, because I had a question about the piggyback as well. I didn't know what that was. So thank you for bringing that up and get that explanation.
Every day we learn something.
I know. So thank you for that. I had, uh, two questions that I wanted to make sure I got through with today. One is to, uh, pull over from last week, and this is me speaking from the Western Wayne County NAACP. Uh, the first question goes to, uh, Attorney Hitchcock. I think, uh, Gina asked this question before as it relates to the act of God. I know, uh, NAACP has been doing some work trying to find out who actually said it was an act of God. They've reached out to the Attorney General as well as the Governor's Office and have not gotten anyone to confirm that the pandemic was an act of God. So I'm asking for some assistance from Attorney Hitchcock if he can tell me, um, how did he come up with that, uh, uh, information or who told him that, suggested that? I know we rely on attorneys to give us sound legal advice, and I wanted to get that one answered because I didn't get it answered before when it was coming from me. So that's my first question. Uh, my second question, it relates to the, uh, recommendations that I know Gary made recommendations for those three that was on the mayor's report and the DPW made a recommendation for the bid for the fourth one. And, um, I brought it up in the last meeting because I read the charter and it said that's the procedure that you use. Um, purchasing and a department head submit the recommendation to the administration. It goes on the agenda. And then someone, one of you guys, the council makes the, um, suggestion to accept the recommendation. And I don't remember that happening with, uh, ITB twenty twenty-one dash ten for the official newspaper back in December. There was no recommendation. I re-watched the meeting. I watched several meetings as it relates to bids of decision-making, and I haven't seen any recommend, any bids that was brought to the council that did not have a recommendation from the purchasing or another department. So I was wondering, is that the procedure? Or not, or do you vary from that from time to time? So these are two procedure questions. And I think, um, that does it. I don't know who would answer those questions, but one is a rea-, both of them are re-asked questions, but not coming from Gina. They're coming from NAACP, Western Wayne County. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, there are no more raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
At this time.
If there's no more, uh, Madam Clerk, we're going to close that part out.
Okay. Takes us to number nine, unfinished business. Number ten, new business?
Uh, un-, uh, oh, that's, does anybody wanted to, uh, answer, uh, Ms., uh, Stewart's question? If not, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, again, number ten, new business. Number eleven, communication.
Through the chair.
Uh, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, um, just to kind of, I'm a, with, uh, Stacy Page, she called me out. But, um, we had a study session for the, uh, invest, uh, city investments. It was a great presentation. Um, Stacy, thank you for bringing Brian in. Um, and as you said, um, I, 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 I'm, the last time we had it, um, we didn't have the, you know, commentary that we usually have after rep. And not only did Brian touch on it, he did a great job with it. I didn't have to read it. He spoke on it. And it was very, uh, informational when he did the breakdown of the stimulus. Uh, we had a one point nine three stimulus that's coming down the, and he just did a breakup of like six hundred billion for individuals, four hundred billion for living expenses, seven hundred and fifty billion, um, for COVID, one hundred and fifty billion for businesses. Um, just great information. And then the other thing I liked that he said that the tax dollars are protected because our priorities is safety, liquidity, and yield. So thank you for bringing him in. Just let her know our taxpayers' dollars are safe under your watch. Thank you for all you do as being a Treasurer. Bringing Brian in, keeping us informed. It was an awesome presentation and he addressed my concerns. He did it verbally this time. It wasn't written. It was verbally. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, I believe, uh, Councilman Williams, you had your hand raised?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I would just like to thank Kevin, Rose, uh, Maria, Julie Watoka, the, the whole team for how they handled the, the vaccine shots. I mean, I, I did not receive one negative call about the service that they received over there at the senior center. And on the weekend, uh, Kevin and Julie stepped right in, answered the call. There were, uh, several Romulus residents that, uh, wasn't able to make the, uh, the cutoff at the senior building. And they were sent right over to, uh, Western Wayne County Community College over in Taylor on Northline and was, uh, had received a shot. So I just would like to say thank you to, uh, all of those employees that actually serviced the Romulus res- uh, residents, because there were so many Romulus residents over there. I even ran into Mayor Pro Tem John Barton and his wife. I would also like to say, uh, Forgotten Harvest will be at high school tomorrow from twelve to three. Um, you don't, uh, need to show ID or anything. You just pull up. Be able to open your trunk. Any, anybody that has their trunk loaded with something other than the food that we're going to load it with, please empty it before you get there because we, we're not allowed to go inside the cars. And also finally, I would like to say, as I announced last month, happy birthday to every single resident that's celebrating a birthday this month. Happy anniversary or whatever holiday or occasion that you're celebrating. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all. Any other communications?
Doesn't, I don't see any raised hands.
No raised hands? Madam Clerk?
All righty, that takes us to number twelve, adjournment, and the time is eight oh eight.
Roll call.
Job, Council.
Support.
Support.
Who supported that?
Eva.
Oh, Eva. Ms. Webb. Okay, it's motioned by Mr. Watson, supported by Ms. Webb for adjournment. Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. We are adjourned. Have a good rest of the week.